All right, good morning. We will call the December 6, 2022, City Council Meeting to Order. I'm going to call on Councilmember Martha Wallace to leave us our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together as one body to serve the City of Jackson. We ask that you give us the wisdom to follow your will during this meeting. We thank you for the season when we celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus. We ask that you always help us to remember those among us that are in need. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is roll call. Marquis, you see that all current council members are present, except for Councilman Cisco. He is under the weather today. Item four is approval of the minutes. Those minutes were emailed out to you. If there are no additions or corrections to the minutes, then they will stand approved as read. In perfect timing, we have some recognitions this morning. We want to recognize our elite young ladies of Lincoln Elementary as they walk in. And this group is a group of elementary school young ladies, grades three to five. And the goal of this club is to advance the leadership of its members through club-oriented activities and motivating them to excel in every endeavor. And they recently just had elections, and so they're a part of getting involved in the City of Jackson and getting involved in their school and their community. So ladies, as you come in, let's go ahead and stand up, ladies. Stand up. Let's give them a hand for being here. I see they have some great mentors with them, too. So thank you all for being here. Item six is the election of new council member to replace the unexpired term with Councilman Ernest Brooks II. And council, you all had an opportunity to speak with the council candidates on Thursday, ask questions. And if any additional questions you would like to ask, you can call the council candidates up now. If not, then we'll accept nominations.
Good morning, Mayor. Once again, we back here within a year, I guess.
We pros at this process now.
Yeah, but it's hard on us because, like I said, I think we have four good candidates that I think would do a great job. And you had to look at it and see what would separate the two or the four to pick one out of the three. And I just wanted to say to all the four of them that the vote that we're making today is not a vote against you and to encourage you to continue, you know, the process if you're not picked today. But today, I would like to thank, I think I have to look at all of them and look at some situations, like to nominate Richard Donnell.
Second.
All right, we have a nomination for Richard Donnell for council. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Byron Elam.
Mr. Byron Elam is nominated as well. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, we'll close the nominations. So council, remember, you get one vote. Can't vote for both candidates. Vote for one and two-thirds elects the new council member. So we have one, two, three, four, we have seven, so it would still be five. My math. Yeah, thanks, Chief. Chief checking my math over there. So five votes elects the new council person. So we'll start with the first nomination of Richard Donnell in council. If you want to vote for Mr. Donnell, cast your vote. Two, three, four, five. Five votes for Mr. Donnell and for Mr. Elam. Let's do that. Two for Mr. Elam. All right, so five of the seven constitutes two-thirds. So congratulations, Mr. Donnell, on being appointed. Other council candidates, I would encourage you that since Council District Three is very unique in this redistricting cycle, that all of you will be in new districts come the May election. And so I encourage you to also look at possibly running in that district, your new district that you will be in for the May election. We will call a brief recess. We allow Mr. Donnell to get sworn in. And then, Mr. Donnell, when we, council member, when we call the meeting back into session, then you'll take your seat over here in the vacant spot. And that might be your spot. No, we'll read just those for the next meeting. So call for a brief recess. Thank you, Judge Blake Anderson, for being here to administer the oath of office to new council member. We'll call the meeting back to order. Congratulations, Councilman Donnell. We'll move on to item seven, invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to any item on first reading can be recognized at that time. And we'll come up here and speak in favor of or opposition to. We move on to first reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment for the Attorney General Federal Grant Metro Drug Fund, amount of $70,000. Now, I'll try to answer your questions. See, Mr. Arnold is out today. Please keep his life in your prayers. She's having some surgery today, so he's with her. But you all got the information for that on Thursday. This is a grant program to move the Metro Drug Fund into a district drug fund, and this is for the salary for the coordinator of that.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. This is an item on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item two is a budget amendment for T-Dot Multimodal Grant for North Parkway for $1 million. Any questions from council? This is a grant that we were approved of two years ago. We're just now getting the dollars from that grant to connect the Health Department to Kroger on North Parkway. So this is an item on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
This is a 5% match from local funds.
Yes, 5% match. Any additional discussion from council? Please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item three is proposed budget amendment for insurance recovery for groundskeeping, amount of $24,045.67. Any questions from council?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
If it's for insurance recovery, would you explain that to me?
Yeah, so this, we sent off our lawnmower to get repaired, and where was it getting repaired? It was stolen. So this is the insurance money that we got from the stolen lawnmower.
Thank you.
Can't get us sent off to get fixed. This is an item on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There are a motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment for insurance recovery for police, the amount of $25,926.50. This is from Rick.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion is second. This is an item on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, we're going to second reading. Item one, proposed budget amendment for solid waste recycling convenience center in the amount of $65,778.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment for capital outlay reallocation, the amount of $0.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item three is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 231 Belmont Avenue from I-3, General Industrial District, to RG-2, General Residential District comprising 2.8 acres, more or less.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Move on to new business. Item one is consideration of a resolution authorizing the use of eminent domain for the Bemis-South Fort Greenway project. Call on Mr. Cobb to give us an update on that.
We talked about this Thursday evening, and I've had some phone calls with some additional questions. Let me just start off by giving an overview. The state of Tennessee has the authority to condemn property for public purposes, but it's got to give a reasonable compensation for the taking. The city doesn't do this very frequently because we like to do business with people who are willing to do business. But in a situation like this, where we're trying to create a long trail, it doesn't work if we have intermittent gaps. So in order to connect the trail from start to finish, we need this process. And yes, we did try to do it by consent, but could not get agreement from everyone. And if we don't get agreement from just a few, it prevents the whole thing from not, the whole thing from working. And we are doing this with a grant from the state, and if we don't do it within their time limits, then we lose the grant, and then we probably lose the project. So that's the background and the context, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I have one. How many landowners are you negotiating with that have refused to take the offer?
I haven't been doing the negotiations. Six to eight.
And for curiosity's sake, how many have accepted the offer?
Oh, that's six holdouts.
Six holdouts.
Yeah, right. This is the railroad track that runs south from the, I think it's the Baptist Church there in Bemis. And when the railroad abandoned its lines by operation of law, the land goes to the adjacent property owners, half to each side. None of the people that got this land realized it. It was not put on the tax rolls. It was one of those things that happened, and the details weren't taken care of. So the people that are being asked to sell this land, up until recently, didn't know they owned this land. And it is just the little scrap behind the back that the railroad used to use.
Are you close in the figures that you've offered and what they want, or are they far apart?
I don't know. I did not do the negotiations. I think what we're trying to do is to offer, based on the same metrics, so much per square feet, things like that. And it's to give someone twice as much as someone next door is not fair. We've been trying to treat everybody similarly, and most of the people have accepted it. The ones that don't, you have the right to go to court and contest our valuation. The process is we file a suit, we post the bond, or post the money, and they can take it, or they can say, we'd like to have a trial. The trial is based upon the reasonable value of the taking.
Thank you.
Then you state that there was no house on any of these properties? I think Stan was saying.
No, it's a little flat line, so it's no scrap.
A question to clarify, we discussed this Thursday, that I guess before the process starts, the property owners could still accept the original offer. Do we have, is there like a drop dead date in that process of when kind of eminent domain would kick in, or has that been communicated?
Again, I haven't been involved in the negotiations. I think the staff has done that. The major points would be make an offer, tell them you've got 30 days or whatever it is. Then we file the suit. That requires us to get an appraisal. That requires us to post the estimated value and requires me to file a lawsuit saying, we're taking this for a public purpose, cite the statutes and the reasonableness. And then we get the land at that point. Then we have a hearing at some point on, is our offer reasonable? Sometimes we offer too much and they, you know, we actually pay less than what we offer. That's not unusual. And any time that we reach an agreement between us, then we can settle.
So.
Most of these cases, even after suits filed, do not go to trial, particularly with cases where the amount of issue is this small. I'm not saying lawyers are greedy, but there's no, there's no big payday at the end of the trial.
As I understand it, most of the Greenway projects that we've seen in other communities and as well as here, after this is done, the property values increase, you know, the effort doesn't decrease the value of the property, it actually increases the value of the property. Is that not correct?
It's correct. It's not like building a four-lane highway where there used to be a two. That dramatically increases it because it gives a wider variety of uses and more valuable uses. But it is an amenity that many people would enjoy, and in my opinion, historically, it hasn't hurt the property values and generally increases it.
All right, any additional questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right. Item two is consideration of a contract with Hickman Realty Group for real estate brokerage services.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
I got my stuff ready here. So this item, proposals were received for real estate services for citywide use. This includes marketing, buying and selling in the Madison County area. We sent this out to nine vendors. One was received. It was recommendation of the purchasing department and the mayor's office to award this proposal to Hickman Realty Group. This proposal, in your proposal packet, you will see the fee schedule. And Alan Castleman has a background in residential, commercial, and land lot, which is what the services the city were looking for with this proposal.
All right, any questions from council?
I have one question.
Okay.
Moving forward, as far as real estate services, because I've been sitting here for 12 months then, I can say that city has not been fair to the realtor community. Moving forward, could you at least have three to pick from? Or how is that where, do you have a deadline to where we could table this until we can get more? Or do you have your highest bid, your best bid?
When, as bids come in, we can't control how many come in. We can always make extensions to see if more offers can be put on the table. But I can't, I can't get more people to kind of come to the table. We can always, if there's more, if there's other avenues you'd like for us to send out, how we're doing bid proposals, I'm more than happy to kind of work with you and make sure more people can get that in the future. But we have, purchasing has been actively looking at updating and our outreach to all the people that can be interested in all the work the city has to offer. But that can be something we can help, we can work with to make sure more people are getting. But for this one, it was just, we just received one proposal for the services.
Sir, when you send the bids out, do you determine who the bids go to, or do you send them to all realty companies?
What we'll do is purchasing will look for all prospective vendors in that field of service we're looking for. We will legally advertise in our newspaper, and we will have that also listed on our website, which anybody can download and get access to. The packets themselves can be emailed out. A lot of people that, if they come across the requested bid proposal, word of mouth can spread it as well. We make sure we get it out to as many people as we can, and we make sure it's accessible to anybody that's interested in it. Or when we do research to see, here's a prospective vendor for the service, we check the internet, check any leads for people that may be good in that field, that may know recommendations for people. So we will research who we can send it out to, and we try our best to send out as many people as possible. We're not restrictive whatsoever with anything.
Okay, so when you do that, you put it on the website, you advertise it, and then you also send it to certain people that you think could probably do the job.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes.
And the, and you are the one that decides the people that the invitation would be sent to? Who does that? You?
We do. Purchasing does, yes. It's just a bid list will be conceived of who can this go to, and that's done either just via by the department that's requesting the proposal bid for us to facilitate, or we will actively look out for prospective bidders or proposers for that service.
Have you had any complaints from people in this business who've said that they would have liked to have gotten an invitation, and they wonder why they didn't get one, or anything like that?
I personally have not. I know some complaints in the past have been, it's a lengthy process, and we have definitely done our due diligence of trying to make it an easier thing to get into. It's, the packet is easier to fill out. We try to hold meetings both for the breakdown of how to get involved with purchasing, if there's questions about the packet, if they have questions about the services being asked. We can always add an addendum after we reach out to the department that requested it, requested for us to facilitate it. But we make sure that everybody can have access to it and understands what it is we're looking for.
And last question, this Hickman Realty is the only group that responded?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Okay, table and reopen the.
Yes, reopen the bids.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion to table and reopen the bids in a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote. Okay. Motion passes six, favor two, against. All right, item three is a contract, consideration of a contract with Pavement Restorations Incorporated for On-Call Pavement and Concrete Restoration.
Bids were received for on-call pavement and concrete restoration. We did send this out to 10 vendors. One bid was received. It is a recommendation of the purchasing department and engineering to award this bid to Pavement Restorations Incorporated. The total base cost of this bid was $668,500. And in your packet, you'll see the breakdown of the individual unit pricing.
All right, any questions from council?
Just one comment about the purchasing process. Could you provide a list of the, for future reference? Can you provide a list of the vendors that you send these to?
I can, I can provide that in the packet. Absolutely.
I think also, council, it's a great point, council, also if you, I mean, know vendors, whether I think, probably send the whole vendor list out?
Yes.
And then if you know vendors that are not on there, or information kind of help us cultivate that list as well.
We will, if any recommendations of something we have out there to add to it, we will happily make sure they can get access to the packet.
All right, any additional questions from council?
I have another one. So for all of the contracts that we are to consider, three through seven, the process was the same. Your office determined who you thought were the people that were in the industry that would be interested in this, and you all send them to those individuals?
We work with, any department that comes to us for this, with the request for a bid proposal, we work with them to find a prospective bidders list, and that can grow as the bid process grows. But it would be the department coming to us, and we work with them to come up with a prospective bidders list, yes.
All right.
It's kind of like a two-team effort.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilman Don is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed six to one abstaining.
All right, item four is consideration of a contract with First Due for Jackson Fire Department Software.
Am I lead into this?
Chief Samuel's going to come up also and talk about the software. You can talk about the process and software.
Yeah. This contract is with First Due. The software is procured through the Co-op Omnia. The software comes at a cost of $39,110.38, and we have Chief Samuel here if there's any questions about the software.
Chief, could you give us just a general rundown of what exactly the software does to help you all?
Sure. ESO purchased Firehouse Software, which we're currently using, and they will sunset the software or retire it December 31 of this year. So it's going to be necessary for us to upgrade and to maintain our fire records management system. ESO came in with a price of $49,570, and First Due software upgrade will be our sole source because of one important product that it has. It will be able to give us the ability to connect residents and businesses to input critical occupant and property data that can be made available to the emergency responding agencies during an incident. Also, First Due is coming in at $39,110.38, which is over $10,000 savings for us. First Due will be able to provide us end-to-end support and life safety-based community engagement, fiber bench and management, incident reporting, scheduling, personnel management, training records will allow us to create incidents and activities, our assets and inventory, and will make available for our automatic pre-planned services for the Jackson Fire Department.
Thank you.
I think one party did state in the meeting that if they have a, someone has a house that's a disability and a thing like that, it would be an information so they'll know.
That would be the customer contact portion, yes.
I think that's a good part that would help out.
So any additional questions from council? Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to accept, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Item five is consideration of a contract with Brentwood Services for OJI Reinsurance and TPA.
So we took proposals for the OGI reinsurance and third-party administrator. We sent this out to four vendors. One proposal was, one proposal was received. It's recommendation of the purchasing department and risk toward this proposal to Brentwood Services. This is at an annual fee of $28,000. Stacy's here if there's any questions about these services.
All right, any questions from council? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item six is consideration of a contract with Symmetra for long-term disability.
Proposals received for long-term disability. This was sent out to four prospective vendors. One proposal was received. We recommend awarding to Symmetra as the best proposal. And the cost for these items, the core rate was .162, the buy-up rate is .395, and the monthly premium is $8,698.28.
All right, any questions from council?
Does this differ at all from what we currently have?
No, it's a continuation of the same rates we have.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you, council.
All right, thanks, Zach and Stacy. Item seven is consideration of proposed sale of surplus property. I saw Sonny here. Sonny Phillips?
I stepped out.
All right, can somebody go find Sonny Phillips for me? No objection, council, we'll go on to item eight, we'll come back to item seven. Consideration of the Committee and Board Appointments, Anti-Poverty Task Force, the appointment of Lizzie Emmons, Olivia Abernathy, and Mark Canseya.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote. Commission on Aging, Abby Hinton and Mary Ann Wilkinson.
Whoa, hey, vote, just a second.
Oh, sorry.
She's got to record.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going too fast.
Eight to zero.
Commission on Aging, Abby Hinton and Mary Ann Wilkinson.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item C is on the Airport Authority, the appointment of Mark Taylor, this is with MME, not with City Lumber, to replace Ryan Porter.
So moved.
And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item D is Keep Jackson Beautiful, the appointment of Janetta Black.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
And then the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency's nomination for chairman and vice chairman, Chairman Vicki Lake, and vice chairman Sammy West.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed six to two.
All right, then we get to item nine. This is not a voting item. Consideration of budget amendments less than $10,000. This is sunshine, then we get to item 10, consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, let's go back to item seven. We'll just have to do this without Mr. Phillips. Consideration of sale of surplus property. You have the properties on your list here, Whitehall, Whitehall Street, 614, Immobile and Magnolia. They went through the process of being published, bids received, and you have the offer of $5,000, $4,500 and $5,000 for the three properties. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one.
No further business.
Excuse me, was that, was that one me? So I was feeling over there. Was it not me? Okay. Thank you.
On multiple. That's right. Okay, all right, thank you, Lewis.
We just to make sure those get recorded, right?
Yeah. No further business coming from the council. The meeting is adjourned.